Welcome to the Board of Supervisors of Elections Meeting. It is Thursday, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. I'll call the meeting to order at seven oh two P M. And I'll go ahead and do roll call. Liam Mercer.
Here.
Debbie Atzik.
Here.
And I'm Eileen Leahy here. I see that Ashley Leonard is joining us. Regina Watkins Eldridge is on vacation. But I believe that Teresa Baccalo, the Election Administration Assistant, will be joining us. When she comes on, I'll double check if there were any comments submitted, but I don't anticipate there were any because I didn't hear of any. We'll go ahead and approve minutes. We have the minutes of November fifth, which was the the oath of the Board of Canvassers. So any changes to it?
Looked fine to me.
It's pretty short.
Yeah. I move that we accept the minutes of November fifth.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Are we gonna assume that Teresa's gonna be watching this later, or somebody's gonna be watching this?
They usually watch the meeting afterwards.
Okay. Cool.
But I will, I'll follow up with her. And then we'll review the meeting, the minutes for the November eleventh canvas. We'll do that in December.
Yes, I can provide a little update. I have written up the minutes for the first canvas, but I have not written up the minutes for the second canvas, so.
Okay.
Bear with me. I will get it over to the, or to the city staff.
Okay.
Soon as I can.
Well.
Thank you.
So we'll take a look at them next month. All right, moving on to new business. The first item is just primary and general election review. Just wanted to get some feedback from you all. I expect that we'll probably do a kind of a a review with the county group, but I haven't touched base with them since Regina's been on vacation, but usually we do a follow-up. But what are you all hearing?
Well, when I, you know how we split up and visited the polling places near the end of the day? You know, I did hear from two of the three that I went to. Everybody got two poll books and two readers and one scanner. That is, you know, one size fits all. And yet our wards have different turnouts. And so Ward five, you know, had the forty-five minute line. Of course, it was the evening rush hour. But their chief judge asked for three poll books, three readers, and two scanners. And then when I was at Ward eight, even though they were lighter at that moment, they, that chief judge also asked for three poll books. So when I spoke with the County Board of Elections when we were there the last couple of times, and I just kind of said, you know, does everybody have to have two? Can somebody have one? Can somebody have three? They said that it actually comes from the state. It's not a county or a city decision. It's a state, actually a state law or a state formula. And everybody could only have two this election. Two poll books, two readers, and one scanner. So I don't know if that's something we can massage going forward through one of the categories.
You can ask them when we, when we meet with them. I mean, I know they base it on the number of, of registered voters. And I think we have to keep in mind that while we don't want people waiting a long time, you know, what, what justifies having an increase? You know, we couldn't, you know, we could handle a forty-five minute wait by encouraging people not to go at dinnertime and just to, you know, spread it out and that sort of thing. So, so I think that was included on the chief judge's notes, which we've all received, and we'll go over those. Anything else that you had, Debbie?
The only other thing he mentioned was the training of judges. Now, this judge was very experienced. He's been here a long time. And he said he felt that the training that, that they received was not proficient, that he actually could have done, you know, a better job. He had to help out. And yeah, so it's just that he's, he's been around a long time, so.
All right. Well, hopefully he put those notes on.
Okay.
Just for the general public, the, there are sheets that are given out for all of the chief judges to be recording things, questions, comments, and all of them are consolidated and brought back to the county for review. We've also received a copy of those.
Yeah. And the only other thing that I personally noted was that the city, even though our population has stayed fairly stable, our voter registration dipped quite a bit from two thousand and twenty-one. So we, even though we're stable at about forty thousand residents in the city limits, our voting population dipped, yeah, our voter registration dipped from like twenty-nine to twenty-nine thousand to twenty-seven thousand. So I just thought that was interesting. That's all.
Okay. Liam, any particular comments you want to bring up?
Yeah, I think I can add a little clarity to the poll book, or to the backups. The, and, and the two poll books, which was really the, the real bottleneck, was the two poll books, at least at the locations that I was at. And Rick said to, I think, Debbie, you might not have been in earshot, but he was saying that there was such a limit of, like, the state doesn't have that many poll books left, and they're about to replace them all, so they're not buying replacements. And so that's why he had asked for two, for three for each polling location, and the state said, no, we can only give you two because we can't risk more being damaged or something happening. So I think next time that should be resolved because I think everyone's getting, they're getting a whole new, whole new thing of poll books, but definitely we need three for each polling location. The other thing that we've discussed already, but I'll discuss it here so it's on the record together, is that we, we talked about having maps of the wards on the doors of the polling locations, just so that residents, particularly this time the polling location changed, but even if there's somebody that moves, it's nice, especially if there's a line to look at the, look at the map so you don't waste time standing in a line and then have to go somewhere else later. And I think that I saw, I witnessed that happen. To one person wait in a lengthy line, probably over thirty minutes, and then get to the front and realize they're in the wrong ward, and so then they had to go somewhere else. I heard the same thing about the training of judges. So I'm not sure if it's that particular judge that has a, something, or if it's general, general. I also heard lots of, lots of comments about how the, how the city does not pay as much to judges as the county. But I would also recognize, I don't think we had trouble getting people to, to, to agree to fill the judging roles. And so there is a little bit of like, we don't, we don't need quite as many, so I'm not sure if, you know, there's a little bit of a supply and demand question there, and I'm not sure I'm necessarily recommending going to the same rate as the county, but I would just say that was something I heard. And then the last thing that I would say is I felt like the general election, when we had the two, two time, two mail-in ballot counting things, the first two days after the election, the next being on the certification day, I think that worked well, and I'd love to hear both of your thoughts on how you felt like that worked versus what we did in the primary.
I got a lot of good positive feedback about starting on the, on the sixth, so I think that, that worked well. Particularly because there was one ward where it was, it was, you know, relatively close, so, and it did flip it. So I think that was good. So I think all of your comments, we've talked about them during the canvas and have been communicated. I'll be interested to see what some of the the county staff, what their feedback is, because they kind of end up addressing some different, different issues. So, you know, so we'll, we'll follow up with that. I think the biggest thing that I noticed is that some things were recorded, were told to us by judges and chief judges, and they had not communicated that to the county. And I think that's, to me, an issue. That if the chief judge is having a question or an issue, to please have them call the county so it can be dealt with in real time rather than, than afterwards. And so that would be the one thing that I would add to, to what you all are saying. On the other hand, I really feel like the county has, again, shown real professionalism and training, and I think that the city of Annapolis really benefits from having them administer our elections. And I know that, you know, it's pretty well-known that I would like to consider having a sync in with those elections. Or at least put it, make sure that we can continue that relationship because it may not be the same in the future. So those are, that's my, my personal, my personal plug. Anyway, so I'll follow up as far as doing a lessons learned with that group. A couple of other just wrap-up things. I see that Teresa has joined us, which is great. Usually we would send out letters to all of the polling locations, thanking them for making the space available and hoping that they will continue in the future. I think we still said they get only three hundred dollars for that. So that basically doesn't even probably cover cleaning up costs, but we've been very fortunate that the polling locations we've been using have done it a number of years. And I think that's it. I don't, I can't remember if we need to follow up with any other groups as far as communication. So I think, I think we're good. Teresa, since you're on the call, has that subject come up as far as thanking the polling locations?
Hello, Eileen. Yes. No, I'm sorry. I have not heard any comments about the polling locations.
Okay, if you could touch base with Regina when she gets back. Usually that letter goes out with their checks when they get paid for having been a polling location.
Okay, I will do that.
So that would be great.
Sure.
Okay. And just FYI, for your information, we did approve the minutes.
Thank you.
All right. Well, let's move on. Ashley, you're here on the call. Do you want to say anything? Do you have any follow-up for the election review?
Um, no. No, I think it went really well. You guys didn't really need me, which is always great. So.
Yeah, we really didn't have any questions at the canvas.
Yeah, I mean, a few things here and there, but nothing, nothing major. So from my standpoint, that's a good, good election.
Good. Anything on your end, Teresa, that you'd like to add?
No, actually, I think it went very well. No complaints, no issues at the office. The at-large judges were, you know, very helpful and very courteous and kind to all their requests to come out. And so I think it went very well.
Oh, now I remember. It would be interesting if we kind of at least acknowledge that the the park, I guess it's the Park Mobile people that do the Hillman Garage. I'm never quite sure who does what garage, but anyway. They really worked well with the city in terms of providing staff to assist voters, getting free parking in the garage, and I think that worked out really well. Anybody I saw and talked to, they were very pleasant and checked with everybody, and people were able to, to park and get in to vote in a reasonable.
For Ward one.
For Ward one, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's premium parking.
Premium. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on, we have some campaign fund reports. Trying to corral them in. I know we received one for Genevieve Torrey. We received some for Alsup Johnson and Odom. I don't, I don't, can't think of if there's other ones.
Jared, Jared Littman.
That's right. I didn't, I didn't get a chance to look at that one yet.
It was just an address.
Okay, that's right. Do you want to, how about we start with Alsup Johnson? I know, Liam, that you had been working with her. Did you get a chance to look at those?
I am looking at them right now, so bear with me for a second. So I looked at the first one, and that looks accurate. Now, the second one, I'm worried that some of these dates got confused between what I asked, because I'm.
Yeah. So Liam, while you're looking at that, I noted on her last amended number four, the report dates were wrong. She, she said it was till December fifth.
Oh, yeah. I see that.
That's all I saw, but you know more than I do about her.
I think the other two got swapped between like the dates and what was supposed to be on them, which is unfortunate. The one from eight eighteen was supposed to be, oh, man. All right, well, we can, we can.
If, if we need to, you know, if you need time to look at that and get back to her, and then we'll look at a final reapproval in December, that's okay.
Well, no, I, I'd like to give her feedback now, and if we can, if we can knock one or two out of the way. So to, the, the first one, the first one is correct. Trying to see if the third one may be correct. Let me just check it here. No. Okay. All right. So I think we can approve the first one.
And what time, when you say the first one, which, what transaction period is that?
It's ends eight seventeen twenty-five, and hers started on one one twenty-five, because that's when she first.
Okay, so it's the very, very first one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me add, I'm tracking everybody's on here, so let me get this in. Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I didn't get a chance to look at any of these. I had, was, was pretty busy over the weekend. However, so also Johnson. Okay, so we've got hers is. And then I'm gonna go back to her and tell her that she's got to redo the, the other three. And you're right about that last date wasn't right. The last one, actually, I think, would have been right if the dates were right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the dates were wrong, so. Um, okay. Well, hey, we're making some progress. Do we want to move, do we want to make a motion for that one right now? Because these are all kind of, we're bouncing around dates, so we can do them separately?
Sure.
All right. So I'm gonna move to accept the amended report from Alsup Johnson from the period, from the first reporting period.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved, okay.
Now, does that, does that get a fine?
Do you want to save the conversation about fines for?
Yeah, let's do that later, and let's, once we get all of these put together.
Okay.
We, we do actually, we do actually need to to consider any fines that need to go to Ms. Alsup Johnson, because they'll need to be paid before December first, before she is.
Installed.
Right. All right. Well, if maybe we could have a quick meeting to review them. Unfortunately, you know, it's just what, one-off, being one-off on one report and not having it corrected just to keep going. So I'll make an effort to even, you know, Liam, if you can, I'll make an effort to pull out all of them and take a look at them also, at least in terms of lining up dates and that sort of thing. So once we get everything corrected, we can get back to her about that. Does that make sense?
All right, yeah, that's.
I'm not so worried about the date. I'm sorry, what were you gonna say?
I, I think that's fine.
Okay. All right. Next one then is Littman.
That was just adding an address, which he did already.
Right. And that was on time.
Yeah, I mean, it's not due until the end of this month, right? November.
Right. Okay. So a motion to accept it?
I move that we accept the amended report for Jared Littman, number four.
Was there a second?
Second, sorry, I think I said it.
It's all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then we had we had Odom. I don't, did you get it? That came in later. I don't know if you had a chance to look at that. She, she submitted two things. She submitted, well, she was approved last time, but there was a previous, a, a previous report that she hadn't submitted the subsequent pages. She only submitted a summary report, and I talked to her treasurer, who didn't realize that that needed to be sent in since they were all blank. So I asked her to send them in, so she did send those in.
I wondered about that, yeah.
Yes. And then in addition, she sent in Ms. Odom's final report.
Right. So I saw her final. She only had three dollars and fifteen cents to disperse. And, um, you know, I know we, we changed it to an Annapolis nonprofit. I just didn't think of that as being churches, but churches are nonprofits. So she, she gave her final. She closed out her three dollars and fifteen cents and gave it to her church, or a, a church in Annapolis.
Right. And she and I talked, I mean, she and I talked about it. She, um, yeah, so she, I, I said I thought that was fine, because she said they did have a five oh one C three, and I suggested that she list the pastor on, since that would be a contact person rather than just the institution, so.
Okay.
So so go ahead and then approve both of them.
Let's, uh, let's do the, can we do the second report first and knock that out?
You mean the final report?
Yeah, I'll move to accept the amended report from Odom for the second reporting period.
Okay. I'm sorry, did you second it, Debbie? Oh. And all in favor? I think you're muted, Debbie. Doesn't look like you are. Yeah, I still can't hear you.
Didn't you give a thumbs up for the affirmative aye?
Yeah, go ahead and put your, okay, all right, so. All right. Do you want to make a motion on the other one?
I, I just, I guess I have a question. So we're, we're gonna take this final report now, even though it's before the deadline, and we're all, we're all okay with that?
I am. I mean, we've taken other final reports so far.
But I guess they were at like reporting deadlines, but if we're cool closing it out now, I, I don't see a reason why not, so I just wanted to, I know.
I don't think there's a reason we can't.
We still can't hear you, Debbie.
Still can't hear you, Debbie. That's right.
I wonder if your speaker disconnected.
Now it says that you're off. Try now. Check your connections is what my husband always says.
I know. I don't know what.
Now we can hear you.
I don't know what I did. I, I have a lot of stuff going on, but I don't know what I did. All right.
Okay. So Liam was wondering how we felt about going ahead and doing the final now.
No, I think as they come in, we should do them.
Okay. All right. So if I can have a motion to approve Ms. Odom's final report?
I move that we approve Debbie Odom's final report.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. As an aside, Mr. Papal, Papaliantis treasurer contacted me about information about final reports, and I believe they're gonna decide to keep that campaign report open. And I said that was perfectly fine. I did talk with Stuart Cohen, who is Gavin Buckley's treasurer today, and they're gonna be closing theirs out. And in fact, I thought we might have it today, but he, maybe he couldn't get the mayor's signature before the end of the day. So that'll be coming then in December. Okay, so.
When is the final deadline? Remind me. Is it like December fifth or something?
December first.
December first.
Right. So I think it, it's an odd period, though, because it actually, the end of the transaction, excuse me, the end of the transaction period, I believe it's actually November fourth.
Correct.
Which is kind of odd, because people are still paying bills and doing all of that sort of thing. So it really, even though it's supposedly till the fourth, they will record things until December first. So.
So, so they had, but the end of the period is the fourth, but they have until the December fifth to submit it?
Yes.
They have till December first to submit it.
December first. So not, there shouldn't be any expenditures or contributions received after November fourth? Or there shouldn't be anything?
There shouldn't be. We'll, we'll, we'll wait and see.
Right. But expenses, yeah. I mean, people are still paying bills.
Well, but it would go on the next report.
It would go on the next one, but for many people, they, not for many people, for people that want to make it a final, they want to make it final. And so then it's really just an early July one that's being put in.
Ah, I see. Okay.
So the one transaction period goes till eleven four, but then starting eleven five, they can just do another report, which would essentially, if, if they're gonna find, if they're gonna make it a final report, they can do eleven five and then close it say November thirtieth. But if it's gonna stay open, anything after eleven four will actually show up in July.
Gotcha. Okay. So I will say we approved Debbie Odom. She didn't have a date on when the, the donation was made to the, to the church, but she does have the report ending November fourth, so.
Okay. I, I talked to her yesterday, and she was gonna do it that day, if not.
Okay, so it hadn't been done. Yet.
It was done before she submitted the report.
But it wasn't done by November fourth? And her.
Oh, I see what you're saying. It's a final report, though. Well, there's no date. I mean, I'll double check with her, but.
Technically, she should submit a report for November fourth period, and then she can submit another one right afterwards as the final one. If we're gonna.
I, I think we just, we just approved the final report. I'm not sure what we'll gain if we ask her to do another one.
Only, only playing by the rules exactly as they're written.
Right. So you're asking her to amend her final report to put in a date?
No, it's fine. I just wish that I did before we voted on it.
Okay. All right. Moving on to Genevieve Torrey. Alright, uh, moving on to Genevieve Torrey.
Alright, I had some.
Go ahead.
Well. I guess it's number four and number three. Right, I, it was hard to figure out because they came in. I don't know, I was looking at Kalen's and I was looking at the. The, um. List. Uh, it, it looks like maybe we have both three, three and four and they're both late. Right?
Yeah, it's a bit jumbled.
Yeah, I, I think that's, I think that's correct.
I mean, she didn't submit. A, um, a nu- a fourth. Fourth report at all.
No, we, we got the fourth report, it was just, it came in on the nineteenth instead of the twenty eighth.
That's right.
And then the, I think there was another one there too. That was due on the seventh, and we got it on November twelfth.
Um, I think she. May have submitted a first version, this may be an amended, uh. Cause I have in my, in my. List that we had looked at something on October sixteenth for the third report.
Okay.
You can go into the, is it on the, let me see the thing that.
And it was hard to track because. Her loans, she has loans and obligations on these last two reports. And so. Um. They're accumulating, but one report. They're new. Because there's one. For nineteen two eighty-five and one for eight thousand five fifteen. You know, in two different reports. But now I'm wondering, does that mean that? She has a loan of twenty seven eight, if you add those two together?
Okay. Okay. Can we just go back to the first, first one we were talking about, if we just go chronologically?
Yeah, that's good.
So what I saw that was submitted November twelfth. Was for September eighth to October sixth.
Okay, that was number three.
And that is her initial one, that was the third one.
It's, it's not, it. She had already submitted an initial one, it's marked incorrectly, she's, the first one was submitted on October fourteenth, it's on the website, it's on the city website.
And so this was just a correction for that, correct?
It was, and I think it was done incorrectly again.
Right, because it looks like it's supposed to have. A starting balance of three hundred and fifty.
Yes.
So this November eleventh one is incorrect.
Uh, yes, but I think it's, it's closer than the previous one. Um, but she need, she needed to put the three fifty on line four and line one, and she only put it on line four.
Right, okay. Alright, so that's the number three one that can, still a problem, and then. The fourth report. So, okay, the one I'm looking at is from November twelfth, did I hear that you also that there was another one submitted after that?
November nineteenth.
Okay.
Oh, which would have been like yesterday, I guess.
Yeah, it came in a separate email from Kalen.
And what transaction period was that?
The fourth one.
Okay. But that was the one that was missing.
Yes, and now she submitted it, but it's late.
Okay. Alright, has anybody had a chance to review it?
I mean, I looked at it, but I'm still confused between these loans. So what, what she's doing is she's paying her vendors, which is great. And then calling it a loan. To her campaign. And then, you know, the first time you claim it, it's a loan, the second time it's an obligation. So if she's done this in the last two reports. Then. There's just no place where it shows her total obligations yet. Because she had an obligation. She's had a, new loans in the, in the last two reports. To herself. From herself.
Right, and this is going back to the issue we've talked about before that. They're not running things through their treasurers, um. Okay.
Well, it's not, it's not, this isn't the treasurer's issue that, um.
No, it's just.
I, I do think, I mean, I think this, this, the fourth one, I don't see any issue with. Um. She's, she's got the, she's got the new, uh, wait a second, oh, wait.
See, I can't find it, I, all I have is that one that we just.
It was hard to find, it was kind of a dangling, um, it, it, so it came from Kalen, and she had Janice also Johnson scanned in. So if you're looking at Janice's scanned in reports, off to the side was this little, um. Dangly participle, I mean, it was like a one from Torrey, and I clicked on it and there it was.
Well, I clicked on that one, it, but that's the one that's from.
Okay.
September eighth.
Can everyone see it? I have it up online.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, now I, I can see yours Liam.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
This one, she has the three fifty as the starting balance, that's correct.
Okay, good.
She has nineteen thousand, uh, two. Eighty-five and forty-nine cents as a loan and, uh, as a loan. And then also as an expenditure, leaving a cash balance of three hundred and fifty, the outstanding obligations is the same as the prior report. Um, and you can see here. Yeah, uh. I guess. It doesn't say. It's missing, oh, it's loans, it doesn't. That's what I wanted, it has a code, doesn't have the cash or, uh, check number or E F T noted in the expenditures. But otherwise, otherwise it's actually.
And those don't have the dates Liam, those other forms, like, right there?
Yes.
Okay, but sounds like there's enough missing that we need to have her do an amended report.
I still don't understand. The eighty-five fifteen loan. And the nineteen. Two eight five, are those two loans that equal twenty-seven eight?
Yes. Well. The, they all are separate, you can see them on the loan page, there's two nu- two new loans. One being five thousand two hundred and eighty-five. And forty-nine cents, and the other one being fourteen thousand. And there's four existing loans. I'm not gonna read all the numbers.
Right. It's at the bottom, they, she has them total at the bottom.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess we don't ask anywhere to keep a tally of the total amount. Of, of, of a campaign loan.
Well, the loans get moved to the, the obligations. So.
On the next report, it'll move down, Debbie.
Okay.
I mean, I think the, in, in my opinion, the only thing that prevents me from accepting this is that it's missing on the expenditures page. The cash check number or E F T.
Okay.
Yeah, and the dates, which. I don't care so much, that, that one has the dates, the other ones don't.
Alright, so we'll ask her to submit that page?
Yeah.
It's which, schedule three? Okay.
Yep.
Alright. Well, I don't see, go ahead.
Sorry, going back to the other report that she submitted. Uh, I think the issue. With this one that will open for me. Was just that the three hundred and fifty needed to be listed as the cash balance, the starting cash balance as well. And it should be checked as amended, not initial.
Okay.
Those are two things. This one also doesn't have the dates on it, but. I felt like it was, if it's one document, I don't know, if you wanna.
I'm fine, I don't care.
Okay, well, if she's gonna submit it, we might as well have her put the dates on. Alright, so I've added for those two. Alright, everything else then up to snuff with, in terms of. We're not dealing with the lateness yet, we're just looking at, she's gotten all of her reports in. So, report for the number fourth. Reports, we're still missing. A report for Ms. Makel and Alderman Gay, correct?
Make them. Arnett.
Well, Arnett's missing his first one, not really a fourth one.
Yes.
Cause his was a final, he just needs to get it amended.
Just those.
I thought Gay, we had one. It just.
Get, Gay has submitted reports. But we have to really review them because the first one is, is mixed with the second one.
Yeah.
Now, he did, he did ask Kalen about. What the late fees that are owed, and I've said. We really need to sit down and. Go through them and figure that, all that out together, I have. Sent emails and made phone calls to Alderman Gay, offering to meet with him and or his treasurer, and I have not gotten anything back. So, um.
I don't know if it will change anything.
Well, I thought what I would do, cause I'll have some time this week, is I'm just gonna pull all of them out. And basically see if I can put it together and make it as easy as possible, so if I can get them to. To meet, to sign them. Um. We can get that done. So I, I'm, I appreciate that, I, I'm happy to. See what, see if I can make, I, I, I don't think there's a lot to be dealt with, it just, it's, we gotta fix the beginning ones and then. Follow suit and then come up with what the late fees are, because I imagine it'll come out of the campaign then. Okay. Um, and I've also contacted Mrs. Ms. Makel and haven't heard back from her. Um, if you wanna try that one Liam, you could.
Okay.
And I think everybody else is okay then.
Yep.
Any others to review?
That's all I had.
Oh, you know. Uh, well, I have two, two things, one is we're still waiting on a resubmitted first report, or start, second report from Torrey. Because on that report, she had listed. She had listed the loan. On both schedule two and four. And it needed to not be on four in that one, because that was the first time they were made.
Okay.
Um, and then the other thing, we got a, Kalen sent us a report from Buckley. Um.
Oh.
And she said, here is the correct ten six to ten twenty-six Gavin Buckley. We had approved one from Gavin Buckley for that time period already.
We did, it, you're confused because. What was posted on the website was incorrect. So she, what's, what's listed as the fourth report is not the fourth report, it's an amended, a prior amended report, so I contacted her today and I said. Could you make the correction on the website, and I think she just sent it to us as a matter of course, but you're correct, we did approve it.
Yeah, I wondered, but I, I did not see anything different, yeah, okay.
And actually, it was, um. Gavin Buckley's treasurer that noticed it.
Okay.
Cause he went to look at it in order to do the final and noticed it, so that's why we got it.
Okay. Thanks for working on that.
Yeah. Um.
I, I only have one other thing to report.
Okay.
And that is that I today or yesterday received. A draft of. Uh. Tom Creek's amended fourth report. And I will review it and. Make any comments, and then that will be submitted shortly, so I just wanted to let everyone know that that should be coming out.
Okay, great. So, great Liam, if you follow, you're working on Creek, if you wanna give Ms. Makel a follow-up, I'll follow up with, uh, Torrey and again with Gay. And Kalen's also helping me with. Alderman Gay and with. Um, Alderman Arnett.
Okay.
So I think we have everybody covered.
Yeah. I saw your. I saw your analysis, um. Eileen, for the. Uh, amendments to the fourth. C F R. That came out today, so thank you for that, it does say that the, um, because it's not gonna go out, or it went out yesterday to the candidates. It's due, you know, fourteen days later, which makes it the twenty-seventh, which is Thanksgiving Day.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if we wanna make a different. Deadline. Other than the, you know, since City Hall will not be open that day.
Well, we can just make a notation to that.
So, how, how long do they have?
So Theresa and Ashley, is, is City Hall open the day after Thanksgiving?
Um, I believe, I don't, I believe it's closed, I know, I believe, um, Mayor Buckley gave most. Set staff, except for essential staff. Offered that day, so I would say it's probably closed that Friday.
Okay. Well.
So maybe make it, um.
I don't think by code we can just add days, I think what we can do is. No, just acknowledge that the date is the twenty-seventh, and so it'll be.
Due on the twenty-sixth.
Time stamped on that Monday. Will accept it.
So it'll be accepted till December first?
I mean, we could do that, whatever it comes in, and first thing in the morning could be considered that. It came in. I mean, I, I'm open to other suggestions, but the code says fifteen days.
Right, um, but they have to be able to turn it in.
Yeah. Well. Yeah, sorry, I'm reading, um, so you guys have your own section on ti- uh, time for title four, and, well. Legal holiday is not, I don't think it's officially defined, um.
Is it indigenous? Indigenous day?
No, I'm just trying to see, no, we don't define legal holiday, um, okay, so it's basically that, um. In computing the times of notice be given, Saturdays, Sundays and legal holidays should be included, except when the day on which the notice. Should be given or the act should be performed occurs on a Saturday, Sunday or legal holiday, which case the notice shall be. Given or the act performed on the next regular business day. Following that Saturday, Sunday or legal holiday, so I think.
It's Monday.
Yeah, it's Monday, because the, it, the city is officially acting it. I mean, Thursday's definitely a legal holiday, and the city is acting as though Friday is a city holiday. Legally, um, so it would push it to Monday.
Okay.
Isn't Black Friday a federal holiday, or is mine?
No. I, I don't know if it's officially been made of, uh, um. Federal holiday yet.
No, it's not, this thing, or AI tells me it's not.
Alright, so. So Theresa, on Monday, are you in on Monday?
I will be, yes.
So can you send an email out to everybody saying that because. That, this only affects the people that have to submit amended, so. Send it to them saying because it is a. Send it to them saying because it is a holiday. They have until December first to submit. The amended reports.
Okay, got it.
That'd be great. Does that work, Debbie and?
Yes, thank you.
It does, and for everyone's benefit. Debbie was right that November twenty-seventh is recognized as a legal holiday by Maryland as American Indian Heritage Day.
Alright, good, good to know.
There you go. It's a legal holiday.
Indigenous.
No, that's indigenous, that was the federal holiday that was.
Oh, okay.
All I know is I always had to work the day after Thanksgiving, anyway.
Yeah.
Alright, um, any other review of submitted reports? We got them all?
We're good.
Alright. Okay, the next is item referral to Office of Law concerning missing campaign fund reports. Um, this really, I think. Had to do with, um. What to do about Alderman Arnett, who does not appear to want to. Submit his final report. I'm not sure it. I, I'm not sure it, well, it could still. Apply to Alderman Gay, because we've made numerous contacts, tried to make contacts with him to, you know, submit everything so we can wrap it up. And my thought in bringing this up as an agenda item is that trying to clean things up by December, we have in the past when we've had. Um. Campaigns, particularly when they want to close. To just finish it out, and if they don't. Especially if there's some money that's owed. We send them a letter from the Office of Law and see if that gets a little more attention. So just thoughts from you all, maybe feedback from you, Ashley, on what we've done before.
I know we have sent. Letters. Um, for various things. Um. It's always been at your guys' direction, but it's not unprecedented, especially. If you guys have already made a concerted effort to try and remedy the issue and it has not. Resolved.
So, Mako, Gay, Arnett are the ones that we've made. You know, they have missed multiple, they've missed multiple reports and deadlines. And we can't, we can't clean up until they clean up, so those three. If, if they're not listening to us, then maybe they should get a letter.
I mean, usually sometimes the letter has included also what the late fees are, but some of those haven't been calculated. That's our next item, but. What are your thoughts, Liam?
I think we should send it to Arnett, and we haven't gotten a single report. And he's not been responsive. Uh, Alderman Gay. He has continued to submit reports. We just can't process them because the first one's not done. Uh, candidate Mako. Uh. Say, we've, we've accepted the first report. Second report, we were looking for an amended one that's never been submitted, and then the third and fourth have never been submitted.
Right.
Allow me an opportunity to try to reach out to her. Before, no, or you want to just hit him, hit. I, I would leave, I would leave, uh, Alderman Gay out of the. Letter at this stage.
Okay.
Okay.
What are your thoughts, Debbie?
Yeah, that's fine. Um, I show that, um, Alderman Gay did submit three and four. And yeah, one and two are kind of, two is based on one. Arnett did submit his first report. He just hasn't submitted the second, third or fourth. Even though he's been.
He doesn't need to do a second, third or fourth, because the other one, if he ever fixes it, is a final.
Ah.
So the issue with, with Alderman Arnett is that his first one from September does not match his one from twenty twenty-four.
Right.
So he needs to amend the first one, which, and then it'll be final and he'll be done.
Yeah.
So.
And you've talked to his treasurer, right?
I don't have. He hasn't responded to his treasurer with the contact information for the treasurer. I haven't tried that. I guess I could. It's usually been his sister. But. He, I mean, I have spoken to him and I've emailed him and Kalen's spoken to him, so. I'm, I'm just wondering if maybe it's just a letter. I mean, I'm trying to. Approach this as it was any candidate, not necessarily an Alderman.
Yeah, I think we should send, I think we should send a letter to him and, and, uh, Mako.
Okay.
It's fine. But you'll still, you'll still call Mako?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's good.
Okay, so we're looking at. So I'll need a motion that we're gonna send. Ask Ashley to send a letter. Uh, from the Office of Law to Ms. Mako and to Alderman Arnett. Formally requesting them to submit these reports and then just cite. I forget what part of code. That talks about the civil misdemeanor.
It's, I think, towards the end.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay, so Ashley can follow up with that, right, um. Alright, moving, anything else on that? In that regard? I think we're catching up. Alright, moving on to review of late fees, loans and outstanding obligations, um, we. We may need to defer the review of late fees to. I don't think any of us have really had. Had time to look at them. I'm, like I said, I'm willing to take a look at them this coming week when I have time. Um, Liam, you had asked if that was something that city staff was gonna do, and I did follow up with Regina and she said no.
I, I was trying to just get a handle on. I know, I mean, Makos are gonna be huge. I don't, and, and probably Arnett, but Tories. Um. Again, it's a little confusing with. The dates, but I mean, this last one anyway, the fourth one. Came in on the nineteenth, it was due the twenty. That, um, that comes to four hundred and twenty dollars in fines. At twenty dollars a day. Twenty-one days. But she'll also have fines from the. I, I think from previous ones, but that last one anyway should be probably four twenty.
There's quite a few candidates that owe late fees, so I think at this. Stage of the game, it's almost sitting down with all the reports and just.
Yep.
Um, going through them, um.
But yeah, some have paid and they're done. You know.
Um, there's not too many, well, maybe, let me talk with Kalen. And see if she can assist us with some of that. She, um. He may be able to go through those and maybe, maybe ask her, she could do a spreadsheet of when, just the dates of when these came in. Let me talk to her and see if she can help us out with that. If not.
Yeah, I mean, you look at the date timestamp on the, you know, I mean, this, the date is on the form.
Right, but some of these forms are not up on the website either, so unless we've gotten all of them, and some of them, we've had paper copies, like. You know, at the primary, so. I did talk to her about just double checking that. All of them are getting up on the website. So, alright. So are you all okay with deferring that?
Yes.
I feel like we need to do it for all the candidates, not just a few.
Yeah, but I mean, we do need to. I mean, the ones who have paid have been great, and so we just need to make sure, yeah.
Right, and the ones that have been paid need to be acknowledged too, so it's.
And that we, yeah, and, and I like when the receipt comes, you know, when they add, when they, the staff gives us the receipt.
Okay.
For the fine.
So, one thing, um, if Ashley's still here. See if she agrees with me. One of the things that I, um, Stuart Cohen, Mayor Buckley's treasurer called me. And so. I don't have it in front of me. So there were loans that were made by the mayor to his campaign. And. There is enough money to pay off the majority of the loan, but there is still gonna be an outstanding obligation, and if I'm reading code correctly. I should have written down the, the code section. Um, it says that any outstanding obligations. Unless forgiven, need to be a contribution. And so. Stuart was going to ask the mayor to make, to document that the remaining loan was going to be forgiven. Which would then. Zero him out. Because the question we had was otherwise, if you make the outstanding obligation a contribution, then it looks like there's money still in. The account. Does that make sense?
It does.
He just basically wants to write it off and just say. You know, whatever is left. Is. It's done with.
Yeah, I mean, it's section four point forty-four oh five oh.
Okay. So if I'm reading that correctly, that's.
Yeah, I mean, it says, so if it's. Outstanding loans that have not been forgiven shall be reported as contributions, which implies that if they have been forgiven, then they don't have to be.
Right, so he wants to just forgive.
Yeah, so if he forgives it, then it doesn't get reported as a contribution.
Okay, just that.
Feel like the way they get around it, if it is reported as a contribution is, it's reported as a contribution and an expenditure to pay the loan. It's kind of like a. On paper. Reported of both and then the loan.
I mean, I, I would just say we probably need something in writing that it's been forgiven.
Well, that's what he was preparing to do.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, well, we'll see what they hand in when they get it into us for the last one.
Because, so, so, um. Buckley's had two loans, a five hundred and a two hundred, and he had written up the five hundred, and then when he did the two hundred, he just crossed out the five and made it two. So they have submitted a letter each time. Um, Buckley made a loan to his campaign, so I guess it would just be a, yeah, a, a letter with whatever amount is left of the seven hundred. After they use their. Existing money.
Yeah, there's no other outstanding obligations or bills or anything like that. Okay. Alright, anything else on that? That area? Nope, alright. Alright, moving along to. Next one, expansion of the Board of Supervisors of Elections membership. Um, I know this is something that's been kind of hanging out there, but. In the, um, spirit of not bringing up election legislature. Until after the election, we now have a bit of a time crunch, um. Expanding the Board of Supervisors of Elections has been something that's been brought up by the Charter Commission, and then also was specifically mentioned when the task force came about. Uh, it does have, um. Counsel, current counsel had supported it, however, they did not provide a process upon which to, um, to do it. Um, the explanation that had been given to me as far as moving forward with it was to wait until after the elections, and that also it needed to be requested. The council needed to request us to do it, so I have received. Uh, I had received a request from Alderman Savage that we proceed with. Doing this, and so I'm of the understanding that he is willing to sponsor. Uh, legislation with the new council, which he will be continuing in, so. This is my, the first draft that I had sent to you all. I had discussed it, um. With Hillary. Um. Uh, who is the person that heads up the boards and commissions? And also a little bit with, um. With Regina and also with Ashley. Um, I think the general feeling was to think about maybe making it as simple as possible. Using the, the language we already have in the charter. I did look at a couple of other, um. A couple of other places in terms of, um. What other counties do. Some counties don't have boards of elections. If they've synced in with the state, they don't have them. Rockville has one, uh, the process, that was about the only one I could find a really good process, and their process is somewhat similar. But other places that I looked in the state of Maryland, I couldn't find the actual process for picking the board of elections, so. So this is what I came up with. So feedback, thoughts?
Um, I. I think conceptually it works for me. There's some language at the beginning. Or I think we're, we're. We're missing. I, uh, we're, we're missing one. Members of how one member will be selected.
Yeah, I had to read that first paragraph like four times.
Right.
Because I thought the same thing, Liam. I thought the third member was missing, but if you read like. It, um, basically two come from the leading political party. Of the state, right? Not parties, even though it must say parties now.
Right.
But two would be from the leading political party. And then one from. Other. Um, approved parties. You know, that have enough members that the state approves them as a party. So that would be your three people that we have now. And so then you move into your fourth, which, which, which Eileen added here, the fourth. So your three would be what we have now, the two from your major party and one from. Another sanctioned party. A minor party. Minority party.
I still think it needs some extra verbiage in that first sentence.
Yeah.
Right, well, I think it points out that the existing language is, is confusing.
Yeah, I just, that first sentence, I, I'm too tired to. Think about it, but I do think that first sentence needs a little bit of a massage.
Mm-hmm.
Tweaking.
Um, yeah, cause if, if you take out the changes, then it, then it reads, that first part reads that you're selecting two and then the third. So if you're selecting two, and then we have, account for a fourth and we count for a fifth, but where's the third?
The third is the second, there's two, then three.
I know, but the way this. Yeah, I'm happy to take a stab at making it, I imagine, but.
I, I almost think there needs to be a period after voters of the city and then start a new sentence that says. Something like the first through third members. Shall always be selected from the, with two from the leading. Party and one from the other party or something like that, sort of break it into two separate sentences.
In concept, let me just go back and make sure we're okay in concept. So in concept. The change would be reducing what the central committees submits from four to three names. But the, the makeup would be. Two members of the majority party. One member of a non-majority party. One affiliated, and then the fifth person would basically be. Mayor's choice. That's the concept I was trying to. Put forth.
Yes, I think that's appropriate.
And then the second part of it would be, is that central committees can put in names, but also people can self-nominate or be nominated by others.
Mm-hmm.
I also think that's appropriate.
Yeah, I do too.
The other than third concept is. That all the applicants, including the ones that the central committee puts forth, all submit an application. Because right now, none of, I mean, we. There's no real application process to kind of figure, give the information to the mayor as far as. Experience in elections or any. Experience in elections or any related field, so that was an addition. So I don't know if you all think that's important to do, or not do, or make the central committee groups separate.
No, I, I thought everything else was good. The concepts.
Yeah, we agree, we agreed on the concepts. I think it's just about getting the wording right.
Just the verbiage, okay.
Yeah.
Um, and when I did talk with Hillary. She was fine with that. She liked the idea of having people actually put in an application, because that's what they do for other boards and commissions. It's not something that has been specified as necessary for us. And it is something that I think Debbie, you and I found helpful. When reviewing candidates for the task force.
Sure.
Get a, get a sense of that, so, okay. Um. Do we want to go through drafting this now, or do you all wanna, I'm okay if Ashley, if you and Liam and I'll just wanna. Submit another draft to be considered. At our next meeting. Um, or we probably have to run this through um. Cynthia too, don't we, Ashley?
Well, yeah, ultimately, once we, once we sort of have what we would like to propose, we have to give it to her to. Do the magic formatting or, you know, get it in legislative form, so to speak.
Uh huh.
But I don't think she would complain. Yeah, we'd do some of the, the heavy lifting first initially to get the language, and so then she just has to sort of format it. I. I doubt she will. Complain about that.
Yes, I can.
Are you saying we could give her this and have to play with it, or?
Yeah, no, I would just give her this and say, this is what the changes we, we would like. Could you please put it in the proper legislative format? For us, and if, and if you happen to see any typos or concerns, please let us know, or something like that.
Yeah.
Liam and Debbie, what are your thoughts about taking that as the next step?
Yeah, no, I think what you, um, what you drafted here with the new concepts, you know, and just having the old language um. Tweak. By Cynthia would be fine. I do have one thing, when it says members shall serve without compensation, um. I don't know if, if we should put it in here or not, but um, for reimbursement for travel, you know, if there's something out of town. That we're going to, I mean, we had 11 trips to Glen Burnie. Um, I drove 10 of those, and that's 54 miles round trip. And so, um. You know, if you take the federal mileage at 70 cents a mile, that's $378. Um, I mean, I. I wasn't seeking that much, but I'm just wondering if we should put something in there. Or if it's not, if it's even not needed, you know, just reimbursement for travel expenses out of the city.
Actually, I think that's a good idea, because I, I, I think after going through an election, that could. The amount of driving could be prohibitive to somebody from, to be able to sit on, I'm trying to think of the. Way of potential people that could sit on this board, and that could be prohibitive to someone. Isn't that a good idea, Debbie?
Well. I think we can check. I, I, compensation and reimbursement are two separate pieces, so. There may already be a mechanism for reimbursement. Um, I'm hesitant to. Maybe go down that road in terms of slowing some of this down and sending it off to another committee.
Okay.
Um. Ashley, are you aware of anything?
Um, well. I'm trying, I was trying to look, so.
Might be a Hillary question, but.
It might be a Hillary. I mean, it says the compensation, the, I can't read anymore. Um, but it says the salary is just whatever's provided in the charter. Then it has a section about offices, supplies and equipment. Doesn't really talk, I think, about anywhere specifically in your section. About reimbursement, but then I was trying to look in the um. The, the general board and commissions to see if they had anything, but I hadn't gotten there. Hillary might know easier. Um.
Maybe this is a separate topic, maybe we can.
Yeah, and one thing I was thinking of, the um, all the fines go towards election expenses, and this would just be considered. A city election expense. You know, and could come out of all the thousands of dollars we're bringing in in fines.
All right, well, let me, let me follow up if you're. Um, let me follow up with Hillary.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think a lot of the travel reimbursement. I don't know so much for board and commissions, but for staff is set by finance policy. Like an adoptive policy. I don't think it's. Spelled out in city code specifically.
Okay.
I could be wrong, but I, I don't think it's.
Right, so it may be. Something we can find somewhere else without changing code.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you might be entitled to do it as part of the finances adaptive policy.
Okay. All right, so you're comfortable with that, Liam and Debbie?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so, um. So if I'm hearing everybody correctly, we're gonna go ahead and submit this to Cynthia and ask her to put it in a legislative format. Um.
Frank, frankly, I'd like, I would like to change the first sentence first, and I can change it.
All right, if you want to submit a sentence. If there's something you want to submit, why don't you just, uh, send it to me and I'll submit it with this.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um. I'd start on the first sentence and keep going.
No, 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 I won't keep going.
It's mostly that first paragraph, that's it, that's.
Yeah, um, okay, that'd be great. And then Ashley, can you give some guidance as far as. I mean, there's some hard, hard deadlines that also go with this in terms of when the next board is picked. Uh, names usually go in in February and then it's selected in March.
Yeah, um, so I mean. There'll be two council meetings for sure in January, so in theory. Um. You could get it done in January, to be honest. I mean, I would say. It's gonna go up. Hold on, I need a charter.
It's charter.
Yes, I was gonna say you need the 50 days, so.
Well, if we don't hit. If we don't hit February and March, I mean, could they proceed as it's currently written, and then if it's passed, then they would just add the additional two people?
Possibly, I mean, we could add that into the legislation. That, that it should take effect upon passing and that, um, you know, additional members should be added. So I don't, I don't know what the correct terminology would be, but we could definitely do something like that, but yeah, cause I keep forgetting that this is a charter, so the charter does take longer. To get through. But we could start it, we could try to push it as far as we can, but we could also put language in that just basically says, and the city council authorizes. The, you know, the additional seats to be filled, filled. Upon effective date of the ordinance or something.
Okay. Yeah, cause I don't think we'll get it in before January.
No, I mean, there is, well, there's at least one meeting in December. I don't know if traditionally there's not a second meeting in December, but who knows? Um.
And our meeting would be after that meeting anyway. Well, no, it wouldn't be. The eighth, so it'd be the 22nd.
I think the best thing is to try to get it in as fast as we can, but then just. Add in some language at the end that says that the positions are filled upon adoption.
Okay.
There, there was one other thing that occurred to me as I'm reviewing this. And I get. The back of everyone here. In the first sentence and, and in the first paragraph, we're talking about the leading political parties of the state. Do we want to amend that to the leading parties of the city?
Um.
The party of the city.
Well, actually, I mean.
Is city law different from state law when it comes to parties?
Well. Sometimes they're different. Sometimes you have a Republican governor and you have a Democrat city, or the other way around.
And what, I guess the other thing is like. What? Indicates leading party, because if it's, is it who's the governor, or is it membership or, or registration quantity?
I thought it was based on um, registration.
That's what I assumed too. I, I just.
It's not based on a certain office holder.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I, I didn't mean to complicate things, but I, I do think that the question of it being the city versus the state is valid. I, I. Without having time to like, sit and think about it and, and really think, my, my first inclination is that it should be the city rather than the state.
Okay, well, let me, um, I can look into that. I can ask that question and see if it's something. That's passed down from the state saying that local boards have to follow that, or not. So I don't know the origin, but I do notice that when, I think it was Rockville when I looked at it, they had very similar language.
Hmm, interesting.
We do have a majority party. Defined in title four to mean the principal political party to which the incumbent mayor belongs. If the incumbent mayor is a member of one of the two principal political parties. If he's not a member, then majority party means the principal political party whose candidate for mayor received the highest number of votes at the last preceding general election.
Uh huh, where is that, Ashley?
It's in the definitions. It's definition number 27.
But, but the language in here is not majority party.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yes, we'd have to switch it, but if you went, if you wanted to tie it to the city. We already have that definition in place, so you would have to make sure that if you're. Either you would use that definition, or if you're gonna go with registration, then you need to more clearly spell out. That, so it's not confused with that definition, I guess, is what I'm.
Sorry, is, is our current definition, if, if we have a Republican mayor. And then eight Democrat aldermen. The majority party is Republican?
It goes with the mayor, yes, but that's not how, the, the charter right now isn't tied to that definition, it's tied to the state. So I'm just saying, if you change this language from state to city, you have to make sure if you want it to coincide with our definition of majority party or not. On how you draft that.
Thank you. For the clarification.
All right, so Cynthia may be able to help with that too. All right, well, I've made those notes. So we might have two different ways of. Writing it, and see what you want. All right, anything else on this topic?
Nope.
No.
Right, and, okay, next agenda item is any general discussion, anything else? We need to review or?
Nope.
I'm good.
Good. Teresa, anything you'd like to bring up, or? You good? All right, Ashley, you're good? All right, well, I think it's a pretty productive meeting. All right, well.
Yeah, thank you.
There's nothing else. To go on the agenda, can I have a motion to. Adjourn at 8:26?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.